Over the last few weeks, most, if not all of us, have participated in a video conference. Maybe one too many video conferences over the course of the last week. And if you're like me, you've realized that being on a video conference is not anything near the same as it is being in person with one another. You miss out on the opportunity to see what people's body language is like, the little expressions that are on their faces, and sometimes you'll lose the opportunity to catch those little comments that are made here and there. I think it's very important that we, as a public body, are here in person to do the people's business. Now, we are strongly encouraging members of the public to watch both online or on video, but I did want to make clear that it is possible if somebody from the general public did want to attend this meeting, we have made accommodations for that as well. We have also made it as easy as possible for members of the public to provide public comment to city council, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that in the future. I want the public to be able to not only view our meetings, but to be able to participate in their meetings. I think that is a vital part of the democratic process, and so that we're going to do everything that we can to continue that, even with what's going on in the rest of the world. These are unprecedented times, but we have a job to do, and we're going to continue to do it because the City of Holland does not close. Let's get to work. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird?
President.
Peters?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Tuthui?
Here.
Arnshorst?
Here.
Corbin?
Hookstra?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Mayor Box?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, and it is my understanding that Member Corbin is on his way. He's got a very important job in the community, and it's nice that he's able to be here, so hopefully he'll be here in a few minutes. We're going to start the meeting as we have done for many, many years. We're going to start with an opening prayer by Mayor Protem Mike Tuthui, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would ask that you join us if you would.
Please pray with me. Our Heavenly Father, we want to humbly thank you for this wonderful city that you have allowed us to live, work, and play in, and additionally, privilege us to be able to participate in the decision-making process. Lord, with all the chaos that's going around, please give us clarity to make the decisions led by you. Please be watchful for all those that are keeping us safe, both near and far. They have an exceptionally tough, excuse me, a tough job at this present time. Be with the first responders, doctors, and all medical personnel. Lord, we also pray that you be with city staff, keep them safe from their daily appointed duties. Now be with us and this community. May we be respectful and patient with each other during these tough times. Be with us now as we discuss the business of the city. We pray this in your name. Amen. Apology to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is our consent agenda. The items that are on our consent agenda are considered to be relatively routine and have previously been reviewed by council, and they will be enacted with one motion unless stated otherwise by a member of the public or a member of council. And if a member of the public or a member of council wants to have an item removed from the consent agenda, we will do that and place it on the regular agenda in its consistent sequence or normal sequence. Kathy, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, March 18, 2020, regular council meeting, written petitions and communications, tax payment PA 198, GHSP Inc., 701 Waverly Road, transportation, approved agreement with Michigan Department of Transportation for 16th Street project, transportation, 2020 resurfacing project, transportation, approved consultant proposals for engineering services for the 10th Street Improvement Project, transportation, 2020, 21 road salt purchase, transportation, 2020, skip milling and paving project, finance, February financial reports, downtown group, Holland Farmers Market, double up food bucks grant agreement.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to have an item removed from the consent And is there anyone on council who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? And at this point, I'd like to entertain the, someone suspended, do we need to suspend the rules to recognize that Mr. Corbin is here?
I was just going to say that for the record, Councilmember Corbin has joined us.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Good to see you. All right, since there is no items that need to be removed from the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. We have motion from Tuthui. Is there support?
Support.
Support, I'm going to give that to Mr. Hookstra. I heard a couple of them, but I'll give that to Mr. Hookstra this evening. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Tuthui?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and for those people who are watching at home, I can see that you can see it on your screen. I do not believe we have any members of the general public here in attendance this evening. Typically, this is the time when we allow for the members of the public to speak to council. This is one-way communication, and we provide a five-minute time limit for each member who would like to do that. In these unprecedented times, what we have done also is created a special email address for members of the public who would like to send an email to city council, and I believe that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. So just to repeat that, if you're not very quick with your pen, it is publiccomment@cityofholland.com, and those emails will be then accepted into the record. We do generally not read them in their entirety into the record. That's been the policy of council. We do have two items that we did receive prior to this meeting, and we will then be dealing with those under item nine of the agenda, written petitions and communications. Is there anyone here from the general public who would like to comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, special order of the day, and it is a resolution for council to extend the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency through May 7, 2020. Earlier today, I declared a local state of emergency. As mayor, upon receiving a recommendation from the city manager, I have the authority to declare a local state of emergency for up to seven days. That's what I did. Under the City of Holland Emergency Management Plan, which was adopted by the city council on October 5, 2016, the process for declaring a local state of emergency starts with a recommendation from the city manager. Keith, could you explain to council what led you to making that recommendation?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, mayor, council. Certainly unprecedented times, so let me walk through what led me to make that recommendation to the mayor and a little bit about the process. First, since, and quite frankly, a few days before, the governor's declaration of a state of emergency on May 10, and many executive orders in support of that, there have been actions by the city and more specifically by various city staff that have been done under the authority of the governor and her declaration and her orders. So I want to make clear that since that went in place, the city has been doing a wide variety of things as not only we're asked to, but quite frankly, we have the responsibility to do, as I say, as agents of the state, if you would. However, there are certain actions that we believe will become necessary in order to continue that, and the language that's noted in the report and in the resolution, the mayor noted specifically calls to supplement a rule, order, or directive issued by the governor. So in order to take some of those timely actions that we believe may be necessary to continue to supplement and support the governor's declaration, we believe that we need some flexibility to make, amend, or rescind various rules, policies, or up to ordinances of the city. Thankfully, in our process, in our ordinances, and by resolution, we have an emergency management plan, and you have adopted a resolution that lays forward a process in which to do that. In that process, talks about that initially, I make a recommendation to the mayor, which I have done, and at that point, because the mayor really takes that process from there, I'm going to turn it back to the mayor to talk about what's been done and then what the resolution tonight actually, again, that we're recommending to you, what that would do.
Great.
Thank you.
So yes, I did receive a recommendation from the city manager to declare a local state of emergency, and upon receiving that recommendation and reviewing it, I agreed that a declaration of a local state of emergency is necessary to provide the city manager, in conjunction with the mayor, the authority to make, amend, or rescind ordinances or rules necessary for emergency management purposes to supplement a rule, order, or directive issued by the governor. Now, it's important to note that the city manager and the mayor will both sign off on any action taken under the declaration of the state of emergency. Earlier today, I signed two letters, one to the Ottawa County Emergency Management Director, Nick Bonstil, and one to the Alleghen County Emergency Management Director, Scott Corbin, who also happens to be a member of this council. Those letters were sent to both counties because the City of Holland bridges both counties. Now, the declaration that I made is only effective for seven days, and we fully expect that this COVID-19 pandemic will last longer than seven days. Therefore, it's recommended that council adopt a resolution in accordance with Section 9 of Act 390 of the Public Acts of 1976 and the Emergency Management Plan of the City of Holland that extends my declaration of a local state of emergency through May 7, 2020. Why May 7? That's the date after our May 6, 2020, regular city council meeting. If it becomes necessary to further extend the state of emergency, council could do that on that May 6 meeting before the currently recommended extension expires. Couple of items to note, and I want to be real clear about this, I've mentioned this before, but I want to make sure that everyone understands this. The city manager and I will be consulting with one another in regard to any action, and we'll both be signing off on any action that's done under the emergency declaration, and that the city manager and I will report to council relative to whatever emergency activities are taken. In reality, Keith, you're probably the one who's going to be doing the reporting to the city council, but I'll be signing off on those as well, and those reports will be coming during our regularly scheduled city council meetings. So what does this mean for the people of Holland? If you're watching this at home, if you hear about it on the news or on social media, residents of Holland, you're going to wake up tomorrow morning and things are going to look exactly the same as they did this evening. They're going to feel very much the same as well. We expect that the actions that will be taken under this declaration will most likely be just administrative in nature. The authority will allow us to function more effectively and more efficiently and respond quickly when necessary. Typically, a local state of emergency is declared after a tornado or other localized catastrophic event, and that local declaration of emergency is done so that we can access government funds to be able to help us deal with that catastrophic event. Well, the state of Michigan has already declared a state of emergency, so it wasn't necessary for us to declare a local state of emergency to have access to funds. The state's declaration already did that for us. So why declare a local state of emergency? Well, those of us on the dais know that the government process is often slow, is often cumbersome, is often takes many steps, and in times of emergency, we need to be more nimble than government typically is. We need to be able to react quickly to a very quickly changing situation, and that's what the city, that's what this state of emergency declaration is going to allow us to do. It will simply allow for flexibility, for faster response, and shared authority between myself and the city manager to meet the needs of our residents and our staff during a quickly changing and unprecedented situation. City council, what's your pleasure in the regard to this recommendation?
Motion to adopt the recommendation.
Support.
Moved by Tuthui, support by Aaron Source. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I do have a question, and it just popped up. I'm sorry for that. Going to need a technicality on here, Ron. We had not planned to have a meeting on the 6th, and thus, it's not on the calendar. Must that, because of tulip time, which typically we take that Wednesday off, must we amend or make a recommendation, or is there some action that needs to be taken so that that is on the docket?
Sorry, Ron, we had comments last time that when you speak from there, no one can hear, so we're going to safely. I'll keep my hands in my pocket here and answer. Yes, if there's no meeting scheduled, then a special meeting should be scheduled for that day, or that evening, to be held, to follow up on this.
Should that be part of this motion, then, because it is referencing May 7, or should it be something separate than that?
It can be either way, whatever your preference.
Thank you. And if it pleases the council, I will make an amendment that we schedule a special meeting for May the 6th, 2020.
Is there a second to the amendment to the motion?
Support it.
I'm going to give that one, was that you Quincy? I'm going to give that one to Councilman Bird. Move support. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the motion?
Your honor?
Yes.
If I could just ask a question to the motion in general, that's all right. Is that okay? Well, we have to vote on it.
We've got to vote, we've got to vote on the amendment first?
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay, as long as that, it'll still be pertinent at that point?
No, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion or comments on the amendment to the motion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll on the amendment to the motion?
Garcia?
Yes.
Tuthui?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Now, is there any discussion or questions or comments on the motion as amended? Mr. Hookstra?
I had one.
Yes?
Clearly, the emergency plan that we adopted a number of years ago allows for this, and it also is a very, quite a departure from our normal way of doing things, as much of life is these days, it seems. I'm just curious, maybe Keith, you can address this. Are you able to give us an idea of what some of those measures that you're anticipating coming up might be?
So it's hard to predict. It is answer number one, right, because we just can't envision, and I think we've learned, if we didn't know that before, we've learned that over the last two weeks. I did reference, though, in my report, that one thing that we do expect to make changes to are some of our personnel policies, and those policies are things that do require, in normal times, action by you where I can't just make changes to those personnel policies. And, for example, you know, we have, but not to the extent that we need this flexibility, but how we schedule some of our first responders, we might be making some, I suspect that we may continue to need to make some changes to how we do some scheduling for them. And then there's also, we are pretty much around the clock, taking a look at the families' first coronavirus response act, and everything that that means for employers, but more importantly, employees. And that just took effect today, but there's still guidelines that are coming down, and I do expect that that has implications for us, that in consultation with the mayor, I do expect that we will be making some changes in that area. And so that'd be the most specific thing that I can call out right now.
Okay. I appreciate knowing that. I guess a final comment, just to clarify what we're agreeing to here, is that after May 7, unless we extend it, this automatically goes away and we go back to business as usual.
That is correct.
Correct. And also, I believe reading in this, too, that whatever measures are taken, one or both of you will be, I think you probably said this, too, but to reiterate, will be reporting back to us what those things are, so that as a council, we remain informed and in the loop about what's happening.
Exactly.
So we're not delving into some sort of autocratic thing here.
No, not at all, not at all.
I knew that, I just wanted to say it, so. Seal the floor.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Peters?
Well, this is a rather unprecedented step we're taking. I would have preferred a conversation that would have included perhaps an option before any of these steps are taken, to think about how we could engage council in some of these decisions that are made. I have all the confidence in the world of both of you, but you're two of the newest people to the table, and I'm wondering if there isn't some collective wisdom around the table when some of these things happen, and you could, we could take advantage of some of that. I'm frankly, I will support this, but I'm a little uncomfortable with it. While I appreciate the fact being informed at regular council meetings, being the representative in the ward, walking all over the place, I think it's better that I'm more informed than less informed, and sooner informed than whenever we get around to it. So these are unprecedented times, and to me, it seemed like the nine elected officials ought to be some of the first people in the room to understand what's going on. I understand we have to move nimbly, but I would have preferred a little bit more effort to make sure council was brought up to speed sooner rather than later, and just arbitrarily say that we'll let you know when some of these things are unfolding. We have families, I have 5,000 people in my ward, believe it or not, they ask me, what's going on? I think it's an obligation to make sure that we know sooner rather than later some of these decisions that may or not take place, and that we are as informed as we can possibly be. So, it's my only comment.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that, Jay, because I, no, I definitely do, because I want to, I want to provide as much confidence as I can to you and all of the members of council, that it is the intent of both of us to provide as much communication as we possibly can, as quickly as we can, to council, and I definitely understand that I'm one of the three newest members that are sitting here, and I do rely on the advice of the council and the wisdom of other members of this body. We also have to be acutely aware of the Open Meetings Act, so that we make sure that any of the business that we're doing as a council is being done open and in public and not in violation of the Open Meetings Act. So while, while yes, I think that there is an opportunity there, and I think there's a value there in making sure that we're getting input from council when and where we can, we also need to make sure that A, we're following the Open Meetings Act, and B, that we have the ability to be able to respond as quickly as we need to in regard to the situation, and certainly to be able to provide that information to council in terms of what's going on. We want to make sure that you are informed as you possibly can be in terms of what's going on in the city.
All right, thanks for that. One more thing, is the law have changed so that we can do things electronically?
Yeah, we can, yeah. Yeah, we can. It is, it is possible to be able to do that. The technology is available to be able to do that. As we have, we anticipated and as we have seen recently in other communities in the area, just because that technology exists does not necessarily mean that that technology works well, or that doesn't create its own problems and its own issues in regard to that. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to make, I wanted us to meet in person. Now, does that mean that we're going to, we are definitely going to meet in person two weeks from today? I can't say that for sure, because the world can be, can look drastically different than it does right now. We made the decision, I made the decision frankly, for us to meet in person today because I believe that it's still safe for us to do that following the social distancing guidelines that were put down by the governor, making sure that we're staying six feet apart, making sure that, that we are trying to keep things as clean as possible for all of us. But, but the short answer to your question is, yes, it is now legal under an executive order that we could meet electronically. Do I think that that's the best way for us to meet at this point? I don't. Any other questions, comments in regard to the amended motion?
Good discussion. I really appreciate the discussion to get both points of view. Very good, thank you.
Great. Any other? All right, Kathy, would you please call the roll on the amended motion?
Tuthui?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is written petitions and communications. As I referenced earlier, we did receive two written items to that email address that we've set up, and again, if you didn't catch it the first time, it is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We received an email from Al Friend regarding parks and recreation facilities, and we received an email from Jeff Minkus and Jill and Chad Zuber regarding the broadcast of our meetings. It's council policy to accept the communications into the record and not read them out loud in their entirety at meetings. But before I entertain a motion to do that, I'm going to quickly comment on the issues that were raised by them, because I think that they're, they're timely and pertinent in terms of what's going on in the community right now. In regard to city parks, our Holland City Parks are open. The governor's stay-at-home order, stay, stay-home, stay-safe order does not prohibit people from going outside as long as they abide by social distancing rules. Earlier this week, the city did decide to prohibit the use of playground structures and equipment in city parks and facilities. They had been open with warning signs that they were not being sanitized and that people should use their discretion and their best judgment, but as we have done and as we continue to do, we try to make, make good decisions based on the best information that we have available at the time, and based on information that we, we now know and the way that we've seen that people are, are using parks and you, were using that equipment, the city has determined that it's in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of our residents that we now prohibit the use of playground structures and equipment. But the parks do still remain open. Fresh air and sunshine are vital to both physical and mental health, and we want to encourage people to stay as healthy as they possibly can, but please, follow the governor's social distancing guidelines. It is perfectly all right to be outside, but you should not be any closer than six feet from anyone that is not a member of your household. I cannot stress that enough. We want people to be healthy, but we want people to stay safe and to stay healthy. Doing so protects you, it protects your neighbors, it protects all of us. And then the second was an email from Mr. Minkus and Mr. and Mrs. Zuber. Says, "As loyal at-home viewers of Holland City Council sessions, this feels like an appropriate moment to express our long-held gratitude for the team that produces and distributes video of these meetings. Thank you for your work in not just providing this public service, but in producing high-quality video." So, thank you for our video team, and frankly, to all of our staff for being here and helping us put these meetings together. Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept these items of written communication into the record.
I move that we accept these items.
Moved by Arnshorst.
Support.
Support by Tethouie. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Huckstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Tethouie?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 12E 4.1 Finance Annual Budget Submittal for informational purposes. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. This is an item that's information-only, doesn't require action, and this was going to be on this agenda one way or the other, because typically, as it's outlined in the report, typically, the first meeting in April is delayed because of spring break, and then the second meeting in April is when the budget's presented in all of its 500 or so pages of glory. What happened is because we knew that, Tim actually looked into that and, and asked some questions, and actually uncovered something that, quite frankly, we probably hadn't done exactly correctly historically, that actually, it's not the first meeting in April, but it's the first of April that we need to give you at least some information. I'll, I'll let you know that in normal times, much less this time, presenting all of the detail of the budget just is not something that we're prepared for, and quite frankly, the budget is one of those things that I haven't even looked at for the last two and a half weeks, and normally, I would be doing it just about all day, every day. So what this does is just says, it's just providing to you per, per charter that we're giving you an abbreviated form of, of the budget, and as we have in the past, you will be getting the long documents in preparation for our otherwise scheduled April 15, 16 meeting, and then a public hearing otherwise scheduled for May 13. And I think everyone understands that, stay tuned as to what exactly we do as it relates to those meeting schedules and how we move forward with budget consideration. But again, this is just for information, so that you have that initial high-level budget summary, and more to come.
Great, thank you. I had the opportunity to consult with our chief governance officer in this regard, and it's, it's our determination that there actually does need to be a motion to accept this as information. And so I will entertain a motion to accept this as information.
Move to accept as information.
Moved by Tethouie, support by Byrd. Any discussion, questions on the motion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Huckstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Tethouie?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 6.1 Gifts. Kathy?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the receipt of the following gift, Parks and Recreation Window on the Waterfront Improvements Program, Barnabas Foundation, $30,000. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you. And I believe Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken has a little bit of additional information in regard to this gift.
Yes, thank you. This is a pretty significant gift. I mean, it's $30,000. The Barnabas Foundation is a pastor foundation, much like the Community Foundation of the Holland Zealand area. This gift is from a couple of folks that live in Freedom Village. Andy Kenyon, our Parks Director, and I had the opportunity to meet with them about a month, month and a half ago, and they were very interested in opening up the view sheds to, through Window on the Waterfront. They've been very keyed in on what the council did, and what Keith and, and Dave did leading up to the waterfront Holland stuff, and were very interested in removing some of the underbrush and things that can be removed so that people can see through there. We were able to come up with an approximate price for that, and they were very excited to make this significant donation that I will note to you is actually over the price that we provided them. So just a wonderful gift from some wonderful people.
Wonderful, thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the gifts.
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Tethouie. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Any discussion, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 13, communications from the city manager.
Yes, just, in the interest of keeping things short, just two short comments. One, on behalf of employees, thank you. To mayor, to council, and to the viewing public, there have been no shortage of different ways of reaching out and expressing your appreciation to employees, so thank you. And to our employees that may be watching, I'm not sure many of them are, but, if they are, but also so many of the others of, in our community that are serving in a variety of different ways, that so many of us are touching base with, whether that be in other levels of service of government, whether that be in our hospitals or medical care professions, or quite frankly, a lot of interaction that I've had with the nonprofit community and those that are serving, thank you, and it's an honor and a small way to serve alongside you in this event. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, appointments and communications from the mayor. I do have a, a couple of items, and Matt, I'm going to queue you up. I don't have my, all of my notes, so make sure that those next few slides pop up on the screen so that, that I have the opportunity to see them. Otherwise, I may have to have you queue me too, because I'm not sure they're going to show up on the screen that I can see. First is a sad note. Many of you may already know that our friend and the, the mayor of the city of Zealand, Kevin Kleinsta's wife, passed away recently, and it is with deep sympathy that we send our condolences to Mayor Kevin Kleinsta, his family, his friends, and the city of Zealand on the passing of his wife, Sandy Kleinsta. Our hearts and prayers are with Mayor Kleinsta's family during this time of grief. In today's environment, there will not be a visitation or funeral service. On behalf of the city of Holland, we embrace Mayor Kleinsta and his family as they grieve the loss of Sandy. We send them our strength and our comfort during this difficult journey. In lieu of flowers, the family is asking for donations to the Holland-Zealand Community Foundation in remembrance of Sandy Kleinsta. To the people of Zealand, to Mayor Kleinsta, from myself, from all of Holland City Council, from the city manager, city staff, and all of the people of Holland, our sincere condolences. I do, on another note, want to echo the, the, some of the comments that were made by Keith Van Beek, the city manager. I've been spending much more time in City Hall in the last few weeks, and especially the last few days, and the, the staff of the city of Holland is absolutely incredible. We've said multiple times during the course of the meeting, these are unprecedented times. They have accepted the challenge of a constantly and quickly changing environment. They have stepped up, and they have shown that they are incredibly talented and incredibly dedicated, and I cannot thank them enough for all of the hard work that they are doing. And as I said before, I want to thank all of you as well. I want to thank you for all of your hard work, and your dedication, and your words of support, and your willingness to step up. We have seen over the course of the last several weeks that the community as a whole has also stepped up. And one of those things that has been done, because we've got a community that is spending a lot more time at home than they have been recently, is that Ottawa County has set up a website as a clearinghouse for opportunities for people to be able to get engaged with their community and help with the community. And that website, as you can see on the screen, is careodawacounty.com. You can go to that site, or you can go to the city of Holland's website, we have a link to that as well. It provides opportunities, it provides ways for you to be able to help and support your neighbors. As I've said earlier this week, we are all in this together, even though we are six feet apart. And it's very important for us to continue to support our neighbors, to do what we can to be able to make sure that the community is doing everything that it can to support one another in these times. The next item, and thanks, Matt, for putting that up there for me in my, in my rush to leave the office, ah, yes, there has been a call for blood donations. We want to put that out to the community, and it's, they, not only is there an increased need for blood in this pandemic, there has also been a reduced number of people who have been going out to donate. If you are told to stay home and to stay safe, it is unlikely that you're going to go to a blood donation drive. We want to let you know that, yes, that is something that you can still do, it is something that is very important to your community, it's important to your neighbors, and as this pandemic progresses, we want to make sure that those blood bank stores are as full as they possibly can be. There's information there, and you want to go to the Visit Versity or the American Red Cross's website, they've got more information on dates and locations where you can donate blood. And a third, if you've been paying attention to what's been going on in the city of Holland on social media, if you've been paying attention on the city's website, you'll notice that there've been a series of videos. We've, we've put together a plan where we're trying to get information out to the community. Every Tuesday and every Friday, I've had the opportunity to work with our incredible video crew. We've been meeting at different locations throughout the city, and yesterday, we met at Community Action House to highlight a program that they've been, they have been putting together to provide food for families. In this day and age especially, with the stress of the economy, with people staying home, with people being out of work, the most vulnerable in our community are being affected the most by this. And we want to make sure that those, the families of this community are fed. So Community Action House has put together a very simple, very easy, and frankly, very fun way to be able to get involved. You can pick up a, a set of instructions, a list of food, you can fill a box with non-perishable food items, and a couple of paper products, and you can bring it to them, and they will augment that with, with fresh meat, with fresh dairy, and they will make sure that people have enough food. That box will feed a family for an entire week. We videoed that yesterday. I'm very pleased to say that our city staff has stepped, has stepped up, and they provided a number of boxes. Matter of fact, our own city manager was, was there yesterday helping to unload boxes from cars. I have seen videos and, and footage of members of city council who have done the same thing. I would encourage not only everybody who is on city staff, everybody who's on city council, and everyone who can hear my voice, do what you can to support your community. Community Action House has a great program, there are lots of other great programs that are out there, and are out, and available for all of us to step up and to help everyone through this unprecedented situation. I've said enough. Appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Any member of council have anything that they would like to say at this time? Mr. Huckstra?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to revisit an issue that was brought up in one of the communications that we received from the public, from Mr. Friend regarding the closure of parks and, and that whole issue, and I was heartened, Mayor, to hear that we are limiting access to the playground structures in our parks. There's, I've been out a lot lately, so I might be wrong about this, but to my knowledge, the only park that has an actual boundary around it is the skate park. And that was referenced in Mr. Friend's letter, with his suggestion that that is something that should be looked at closely. So, maintaining proper distancing and not spitting on anyone or touching anybody, I drove out there yesterday afternoon and spent about a half an hour just observing the skate park. And there were, well, more than a half an hour or so that I watched, there were probably 10 or 12 participants there. And to their credit, for the most part, they exercised proper distancing. Of course, they were going like this, you know, all over the place, so it was hard to run into each other. But, you know, if we want to take seriously our commitment to this community, and the fact that we want to do everything that we can to protect our citizens, especially now the, the younger demographic, as best we can, while we're prohibiting use of playground structures, I was a bit ambivalent about this for a while until I thought about it some more, because it'd be a real bummer to have to close the skate park down for a lot of people. But for the cost of a short-term inconvenience, I think the long-term benefits of ensuring the health and welfare and, and ongoing life ultimately of some of our residents, I would suggest, if we haven't already, that we should probably lock up the skate park for, you know, at least the duration of this emergency period. Again, you know, we look at all this stuff through the filter of the nutty, crazy times that we're experiencing, and nobody, you know, the whole, everything about it is for stinking, but there are things that we just need to do, I think. So, it may already have been done, but I just want to bring that to staff's attention that probably should be something we should do. So, I'm done speaking. Maybe you want to say something?
Yeah, just to clarify, yes. So, structures, and again, it happens very quickly, so I don't even know what day it is, or what day we did this.
Yeah, join the crowd.
But with Andy, what we've basically done is structures, we've posted as closed, is the intent, and I know, I think he said he went out there yesterday, so I think they're trying to get out to those structures. I think that might be the only structure where we have some, like, quite frankly, an ability to, like, close it down. So if it, if, if it isn't that way already, we've, we're, we're doing that. One of the things that's difficult with most of our playground structures, there, there's not, there's not an ability to, like, close them down or wrap them in, we, we don't even have the stuff to do it in, nor, you know, really the staffing to do that. So, just, we're just calling upon the public, they're posted, structures are closed, parks are open, and then one of the things kind of that falls in between, our courts, we've, we've posted also and putting out the call, you know, I've driven around a lot too, so someone shooting just hoops by themselves, right, is appropriate with social distancing at this point. I've had the discussion with my daughter, who kind of is, like, wants to do anything to get out and about, and she lives in my house. So us going to play tennis, let's say, actually would be okay. But there's obviously other situations where people, like, they shouldn't be playing tennis together because they're sharing. So, we're doing our best through all of this, consulting, Andy consults with, so playgrounds, playground and structures, skate park closed, parks open, and we're have, we're getting around to heavily signing our courts to, and, and similar to the county in particular, all of this is being evaluated, so that if we see kind of people more en masse, not following these types of rules, which in Holland, I think most people, most people will, we really don't want to get to the position that we're going to have to take more drastic measures and, like, totally close or lock things down, but that is obviously a possibility. So, thank you. And for the opportunity to clarify.
Anything else, Dave?
That's it.
All right. Yes, Mr. Peters?
We had another request. I know that it's a small thing, but I think, observation I would make, it would, it would make a difference in some of our residents, is to revisit this, moving up the date that we can park on the street overnight, sooner than May 15. I agree with Mike's comment you saw about, let's wait till we get the, get the curbs cleaned up, but I do think that, I don't know what process that, I don't know how we go about that, but that would be a small thing for some families that I think are going through, just some hoops they don't have to, they shouldn't have to do.
Yeah, thank you, and, and we have that, we've got that on both sides, we almost had a lot of comments on that, not a lot, maybe 10, 10, 10 or so. So unlike the parks where we did have the ability to make some of these changes, and I, I would say they're more very directly related to the governor's order also, that, Councilman Peters, is a ordinance. So until you took the action that you, well, actually, until the mayor did what he did earlier today for seven days, and then you extended that, I would not have been able to do that. You guys to do that. You guys would have, you know, in a longer process even. You wouldn't be able to do that just in one meeting, for example. So, mayor and I will continue to consult on that. I think a lot of that is going to depend on, are we going to be able to do spring cleanup on the schedule that we've established now? Or are we going to delay that also? And I'm not at the position to make a recommendation even on that, much less the ordinance. But thank you. I think that's something that we will look at, and if possible, we will move that up.
Any other questions, communication from council?
I was wondering with the, and we talked earlier today about the bills that were passed with the high water, any provisions with communities cooperating with the high water and erosion kinds of issues, and that is something that we're on board with in Holland? Some people, since my ward is on the water, people are always asking about.
Yes. So, I will admit that with everything else going on, I probably would have been more prepared to answer that question in other times. But I will say that that is one thing, that's one of the very few things that I've dealt with outside of COVID in the last two and a half weeks. And yes, there has been legislation that's passed. I, I'm not sure if the governor signed it or not, but if she didn't sign it, it kind of defaults into being law. So, there has been a communication and a coordination process between Park Township, Holland Charter Township, and the city to take a look at taking advantage of some of the legislation that might be able to take a look at some high water and boating and no-wake issues. So, I really don't have any more information for you right now, but...
It's in the pipeline.
Yeah, I mean, in normal times, high water would have, would have been our emergency, right, outside of the normal. So, we're trying to, we're trying to juggle that in and fit that in also. So, more to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications, questions, comments from council? Seeing none. I believe there is just one more item on the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Tuthui, support by Peters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.